Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
Is Megan on the phone?
Um, no, she was gonna just, because we have a call and we'll dial her in.
Okay, when we get down the hall.
Can I make a note about these all have a hyphen in my last name? Sorry.
It's okay. Just need to add whatever the template is, just needs to be updated, that's all.
Most of, I mean, they've got it right on most of them, right? I don't know if it's an old template or...
This petition to the general court, those are...
No, that's my fault.
Oh, that's okay.
Our counsel's office.
Then it's really, really okay.
That is lack of knowledge on my part, and I apologize. It will never happen again.
Oh, I wouldn't say that. I've been very careful not to say stuff like that anymore. All right, uh, FCTV, we're gonna call to order at 6:32. And I call us to order, and we're gonna go into executive session to consider with potential vote the value of Mayflower Wind and electric cable easements to discuss strategy with potential vote regarding pending regulatory litigation before the Energy Facilities Siting Board for Mayflower Wind, EFsb 21-03/DPu, 21-142, and 21-143. And also, we're gonna be discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Falmouth Public Library Association. All those in favor of going into executive session?
Yes, do you need a second?
I do, yes.
I'll second it.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
By roll call?
She said she was gonna call, and she does have that number, so she said she's gonna do. And if she doesn't, I'll soon, I can call her.
Okay. We've been in executive session, we've been discussing the Mayflower Wind issue as well as discuss strategy with regard to bargaining with the Falmouth Public Library Association, and which we did resolve, that one. The other one is just ongoing and informational. And I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Dr. Nancy Taylor's not joining us this evening, she's traveling, and Megan English Braga is on the phone to be with us for the meeting. And we are gonna start off with the Proclamations of Arbor Day, would anybody like to read that?
I'll read it first.
Thank you.
Whereas the town of Falmouth benefits from the graceful canopy of tree limbs that shade us from the blazing summer sun, purify our air contaminants, provide a peaceful respite from the ordinary world, and generally beautify our community; and whereas the town has been recognized by a national program and is known far and wide as a tree city; and whereas the Falmouth Tree Warden, Falmouth Garden Club, and Falmouth Public Schools recognize the aesthetic value of the beautiful trees of Falmouth by organizing a day to celebrate the purity and strength exemplified by a statuesque tree and all living green things, and thereby honor the trees of Falmouth by singing songs, sharing thoughts, and teaching more about the value of trees; and now therefore we, Douglas C. Brown, Nancy R. Taylor, Samuel H. Patterson, Meganine English Braga, and Angelay Scott Price, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Thank you.
Scott Price, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to do a roll call because Megan's on the phone?
We do, yes.
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Megan?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have Jeremiah Pearson here, our tree warden, say a few words.
Alrighty.
Good evening, everyone, Jeremiah Pearson, tree warden. So Arbor Day will be the 29th, it's going to be at 300 Main Street at the library lawn. We're gonna have Mullen Hall School kids there, we're gonna have kids from, I believe, T-Ticket School as well, with different stations, we're gonna be planting a lot of trees, and we're gonna have a lot of fun.
You're gonna be planting trees on the library lawn?
On the lawn in the front, and one in the lawn.
Oh yeah?
Around the sides, and then we're also gonna be doing a pollinator garden.
What time is that gonna be?
It's, you can come anytime from like seven to three.
Oh, okay.
But the kids probably won't get there until like around 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And next we have another proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
I'll read this one.
Alright, thank you.
National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10th through 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Falmouth Emergency Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Falmouth Energy, excuse me, Falmouth Emergency Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board for the Town of Falmouth declares the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the Town of Falmouth, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 11th day of April 2022.
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. But we don't all have to call 911 to say thank you.
Definitely not.
So next we have recognition, and I'd like to recognize Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee at Town Meeting. I was, I intended to speak and thank them for their work, working with Eversource to come to iron out the details of the agreement to bring the cable going to the vineyard down the bike path. They spent a lot of time, they were very thoughtful about what the mitigation would be, and you know, how it would be implemented. And thanks to Eversource too for listening, and... and implementing those ideas. So between the Select Board, the BikeWays Committee, and the town staff, I think we did a good job of working out the details with them, and so, thanks to the BikeWays. I always feel confident when we send something to the BikeWays Committee, that'll get a good thorough vetting, and they pay close attention to the details, so, with a great appreciation of their work.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd also just, I second that, wholeheartedly, and on a very different note, I had actually missed, and I'm embarrassed to say that I missed this, I just saw it yesterday, but the passing of Kevin Lynch, who was somebody who you always saw at town meetings, he was someone who worked for many years volunteering for FCTV for so many of their events, he was a veteran, and he did a lot in our community for issues surrounding our veterans, and just was somebody who was so connected within our community, and he had been ill over the last few years, and he did pass away on March 24th, so I just wanted to recognize his many contributions, and just let his family know that we appreciate that they allowed him to, they shared him with us for so many years, and allowed him to spend so much time giving all that he did to the community, particularly since this was the season of town meeting, and that was something that he participated in quite a bit for a long time.
Certainly true. He was a great help to me when I first started going to FCTV, when my daughter was little, we used to do a show called Cape Cod Kids, and he was always around there, very helpful and nice guy, and I believe it was Kevin.
Very nice.
I believe it was Kevin who used to fly the helicopter over the library at the Veterans' Day ceremonies, I think it was Kevin that did that. So thanks, we're gonna miss him, condolences to his wife Betty. Any other recognitions this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next announcements. I have announcement to make, which is relative to recent Select Board Executive Session, where we took a vote to hire a special counsel to assist us, and here's my announcement. At an executive session of the Select Board on March 29th, 2022, the Select Board voted to hire a special counsel to assist the Board in its deliberations on contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The Board has hired Robert S. Troy of Sandwich to represent the town as special counsel for this purpose. So that's just an announcement to let the public know that that's something that's going on, and you should know it. And next we have public comment. Who's here for public comment? Yes? Come, please go to the podium and identify yourself for the public.
Peter, just see your computer on? Yeah, just need to line in, okay. The instructions are right.
We do ask you to keep this to two minutes, if possible.
Okay.
If you need a little bit more time, we can be flexible, but that's-
It might be three minutes, so, you know.
Okay, with that, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you can do it if you want. Yeah, you'll do it faster, you've done it. Yep.
Okay. Yeah. So my name is Joel Amay, I'm here to invite you to an event that's gonna happen on Friday morning. The event is a stonewalk. So to define that jargon, what is a stonewalk? Well, you load 4,000 pounds of Vermont granite on a cart, and 12 people strap themselves in and pull it. So this stonewalk is the pandemic bereavement stone. This is the fourth stonewalk, the first one was for victims, civilian victims of war, and that stonewalk went from Boston to Arlington Cemetery down in Washington, actually Virginia, and then from there it flew to Hiroshima where it finally rests. The third, second and third stonewalks have ended up in Coventry, England, and in Shearborn, Massachusetts. We don't know where this one's gonna end up yet, it's starting its walk. Started a year ago in Boston, it visited the Convention Center, which was one of the mass COVID vaccination sites, it's traveled through a bunch of churches, and at this point today, it's in Sandwich, on its way to Hyannis. On Hyannis Thursday morning, 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock, there are two memorial services, then it's gonna spend a few hours walking around in Hyannis. Now, we're not gonna walk it to Falmouth, we're gonna put it on a truck. So Thursday evening, it will be at the Falmouth Hospital, and for the whole evening, it will be out there for people to visit, lay your hands on it, meditate, recover, grieve, whatever you're, whatever state you're in. So all evening Thursday, it'll be available, I'm guessing it's gonna be right outside the front entrance near the emergency room, not quite certain on that one. At 9:00 in the morning, Friday, there will be a memorial service, we're inviting the Select Board, any town employees, any town residents, everybody in the room. We especially give a special invitation to the police and firefighters. So we've scheduled it at the hospital because the hospital workers were our heroes during the pandemic, and our firefighters, the paramedics, and the ambulances, the police department, they all did wonderful service for us, we'd love to see some participation with them to come up and, you know, see what's going on. After that ceremony, probably starting around 11 o'clock, it's gonna walk around Falmouth, not quite sure where it's going, but, so you're all invited to visit the stone Thursday night for your own private time, come to the memorial service, you're invited to pull the stone if you wish. I'm hoping we bring it down the hill with the truck, otherwise we run over. So then when it gets down on the flat, we'll be pulling it around town. And after it leaves Falmouth, it'll visit a few more sites in Cape Cod. It's going to New York City sometime early summer, it's gonna visit a whole bunch of places, and then it's gonna do the route of the New York City Marathon, and I've been volunteered to pull it the 26 miles, so I'll be part of the team pulling that. So it's going wherever it goes, it gets its schedule planned, it'll become about as famous as the first stonewalk. Here's a picture of the first stonewalk, that's Muhammad Ali. So I don't know if we're gonna get any famous person to walk up to the stone and get their picture taken, but we do hope so. The pandemic stone is not just for people in Massachusetts or in the United States, it's for all around the world, part of that Kaisanis, a whole bunch of flags from all the countries around the world, so it's a global thing. Maybe this stone will get to some foreign countries and get walked around there, I can't predict the future. Thank you.
Thank, what time on Friday morning?
Friday morning at 9:00.
Chair, have you arranged for police escort and traffic control?
Alan Burt went to the police department today.
That's for you to, we're not debating it. Just a tip off.
He went to the police department today, so I don't know what happened there, so, maybe he got arrested.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for sharing that with us.
You gonna be able to attend?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, Dave Moriarty, resident of Falmouth. I don't know, is appropriate to bring this up now, or wait till later? It's about, about the Mayflower Wind project.
Well, that's not on this agenda, that was on our-
We have on the agenda tonight a discussion of scheduling the public hearing, so if it's related to the, sorry, I shouldn't say hearing, public forum.
I just had a-
Related to the public forum, it could perhaps wait, if it's not related to the public forum, then it's-
Okay. I just had a couple of quick questions, so, for the board.
You can't really answer questions in public comments, really for stating your feelings or your-
Well, no, 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 this is just a technical question.
Okay.
Is the cable coming to Falmouth 800 megawatts or 1,200 megawatts?
Well, this is outside of the scope, it's not, so public comment time is for you to tell us your, what you're thinking of and what's going on.
That's what I'm thinking of, you know.
No, but we're not supposed to be deliberating and answering you? I'd be happy to answer you after the meeting, or during our discussion later, while we're talking about it?
Has there been a route established?
No. Can't answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yes?
I just wanted to come up and address something that was in the newspaper, I think it was the eighth.
Identify yourself?
Diana Moda, and so I am running for selectman, and apparently they like to take cheap shots, retaliation, bullying, or whatever. So in Friday's paper, there's a picture of my son at the high school, talking to a group of seniors about the military. Right next to that, here's his mother's name saying that I was arrested in 2020 for harassment, whatever. And so I went through some stuff or whatever, but to take these personal digs at somebody because they're trying to do what's right for the, you know, the town, it's not right. It's not right, we can't do that stuff. And then I read something in the paper about David Viera. I felt about him, no, but I'm just saying, it was in the paper.
This is not the purpose of public comments.
Hey Sam, listen, I can say whatever I want.
No, you cannot, not in this forum, this is not the place for it, you wanna write a letter to the-
Okay, so, do you have the budget book? Guys have a copy, can I get a copy of the budget book? Huh?
It's really a time for you to make a statement.
But no, I want, I want a copy of that budget book, that when we were at the meeting, the town meeting, and Jennifer Mullins stood up there, it was like, we did this, we did that, we did this, we sent this money for the blah blah. Nobody goes through and explains everything, oh, we spent this much on that, how do we know? How are we supposed to know where our money's going? I mean, she's literally stood up there and just, I couldn't even understand a word that she was saying.
Well-
So I wanna get a copy of the budget book, so I shouldn't have to print it, because I know it's like 600 pages long, or whatever it is, but I wanna see it.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
I'm sure if you come in during the daytime and-
Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, thanks.
Is that not available at the library, many times?
No, I want a copy, like a physical copy, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't, Sam, listen, I shouldn't have to ask you for any of this, do you understand me? I shouldn't have to ask anybody for any information, because we live here, we are the citizens of Falmouth, we pay tax dollars, and we've been getting ripped off for years, so Sam, I'll say whatever I want.
Thank you, any other public comments this evening?
How can you be the town lawyer and sit on all kinds of boards? Isn't that conflict of interest? Just saying.
William Marston, Falmouth, are we gonna be able to speak on the discussion on Pheasant Lane?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll answer everything?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, next we have preliminary report from the town managers.
Sure, first of all, Julian Susso is unable to be with us today, he's taking some well-earned vacation time, and will be back next week.
Excuse me, please. We're trying to carry on now, okay? Thank you.
As the chair mentioned earlier, the Board voted in executive session to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Falmouth Public Library Association for fiscal year '22 and '23. Tonight, the Board has two public hearings, one involving an all-alcoholic club license for Seacoast Shores, the second involves a request for wastewater variants under the Flow Neutral Bylaw. Both appear to be in order, with regard to the wastewater variants, all matters are addressed, and this property is indeed eligible. We recommend your favorable consideration of the request from the Methodist Church for a sign code variance, as we work with them routinely on these signed variances for many years. The Board will be reviewing and discussing alternative dates and times for a planned public forum on Mayflower Wind. We have confirmed that the Lawrence School Auditorium is available, the high school auditorium will not be available until mid-June, so depending on what the Board's preference is, we can talk about dates and location. And finally, the Board will be considering a request for a local initiative program support of the proposed 40B single home project at 33 Pheasant Lane, under separate cover, you have a memo from Town Council, or I should say Special Council, on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. So next we have public hearings, application for an alteration of the license premises at Seacoast Seasonal Alcoholic Club License at Seacoast Shores Association Incorporated at 7 Fairview Lane, East Falmouth. Is there anyone here from the applicant?
Do I need to read the hearing notice?
Oh, yes, excuse me.
I'll read it. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Seacoast Shores Association has applied for an alteration of premises to its seasonal alcoholic beverages club license to be exercised at 7 Fairview Lane, East Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 7:30 PM, on the above application, per order of the Select Board, published in the Falmouth Enterprise Friday, March 18th.
Thank you. Welcome. You wanna tell us who you are and what your plan is?
Currently, we have 120-
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
Hi, I'm sorry, my name is Daria, Daria Latipova, and current, I'm working for Seacoast Shores Association, and we have clubhouse, currently we have 120 seating place in the inside, so what we're trying to do to allocate between inside and outside, we have pool dining area, not dining, pool area, so what we're trying to do is-
Speak a little bit louder, I'm having trouble hearing, sorry.
So what we're trying to do, get permission to serve 40, to separate the seats, we have 120, we wanna have 40 at the pool, and we rest 80 in the dining area during the lunchtime, which is 11:30 till 4:00 PM, and 5:00 PM till closing, have it 120 inside as a dining area.
Okay. So I think you're gonna shift some of the seating from the inside to the outside for a certain period of time?
Yes.
Okay. You wanna share?
Exactly, so I'm the general manager, Marissa Viser, general manager at Seacoast Shores, so I work with Daria, and we're here exactly what she just said, she's been working on this for a long time.
All right.
I'm David Smith, I'm the Vice President of the Seacoast Shores Association.
Okay. And questions from the Board on the application, on the plans or anything?
I didn't see any-
No, nothing was concerning.
Yep, any, did you see any comments from any of the town staff?
I didn't either.
I would move a move.
Second.
We got a public hearing, so, any comments or questions from the public on this application?
Did I move, we close the hearing?
No, second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, by roll call, please?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Megan?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
Do you wanna, okay, I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of approval?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thanks, have a great summer.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have Flow Neutral Bylaw, evaluation of request for variants, Excel 464 Main Street, LLC 464 Main Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts.
I can read that public hearing.
Parcel 47B, 02013000. Yes, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board meeting room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on the application of Excel 464 Main Street LLC for a wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw, for redevelopment of commercial residential property with a restaurant on the first floor and 10 rental apartments on the second and third floors at 464 Main Street in said Falmouth, per order of the Select Board, published in the Falmouth Enterprise Friday, April 1st.
Welcome, Attorney Clower.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Excel 464 Main Street LLC. I'm joined tonight by Joe Valley, who's acting as a consultant to the project at this point. This property, 464 Main Street, has for many years been a vehicle repair site, however, we have a proposal under the Mixed Residential Commercial Overlay District, the MRCOD. I've heard Jed call it Mr. Cod, I just can't bring myself to say that on a repeated basis, so MRCOD district. I believe this might be the first application we've seen under that new overlay that was approved at November Town Meeting. We are proposing a mixed use of the site, which would constitute a restaurant on the first floor and 10 rental apartments on the second and third floors, that would include three two-bedroom apartments and seven one-bedroom apartments. Of those, three would be restricted as affordable, however, under the MRCOD, all are eligible for inclusion on the town subsidized housing inventory list. Although this proposal is by right, under the MRCOD, it still does require a variance from the Flow Neutral Bylaw under 180, Section 51. The designed wastewater flow for the restaurant and the apartments is just over 5,800 gallons per day. This property is already on the sewer. This property is already on the sewer. Town meeting specifically and expressly limited the MRCOD district to properties that are on the sewer connection. Pursuant to the bylaw, we did obtain a finding from the wastewater superintendent that sufficient capacity exists, and provided plans showing that septic would be possible on the site as to prevent overdevelopment, which I believe there's correspondence from Scott McGann in the file about. Further, this does meet the board's policy and stated goals for, uh, flow neutral variances, which include affordable housing and year-round economic development in the form of both employment, uh, under the restaurant, as well as increased property taxes, meals taxes, and all the other uses that will come along with that. So, I think that this does qualify for a variance under the Flow Neutral Bylaw. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions from the board?
I have a general question. Um, how long did it take from when your client decided they wanted to do this, to have all this ready to give to us?
We have been working on plans in various iterations for probably four months, four or five months. But that, a lot of that is internal, what, what, what does he want to do with the site? What is it they're looking to do? What, what's the maximum that could happen? And they're not trying to seek the maximum, because I think under the bylaw, we could potentially have up to 15 units on that site, but he didn't want to overdevelop the site.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I'm, I'm very glad to see that somebody is starting to use this, and I just wanted to know, so that we can tell other people about how long it took to put this together.
Yeah, it's, it's, from when we actually started submitting to the town, it hasn't been that long. Most of the process is really in the internal development.
Great.
But you're not through all your permitting yet, are you?
No, we'll still have to go through the planning board, but this is really a threshold question, because if we can't connect to the sewer...
So, I just wanted to clarify.
Right, right. I just, I'm just pleased at how long, like, it hasn't taken too long to even get to us.
At least somebody's interested in taking it up.
And that as well, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Megan, have anything?
No, I just would say that I, I really think the proposed, um, not only sort of the functionality of what the space would be, I think is an improvement, but, um, the proposed design looks, you know, really nice, and it looks like an improvement to that, that part of Main Street.
Okay. Well, we're only talking about the sewer, uh, variance part of it, and...
Yeah, yeah, but part of, but part of what we look at is, you know, what is the function going to be for that space? And I think this is precisely what we're supposed to be doing with, I mean, this is what we should be doing with Main Street, right? We should have mixed use, where we have an economic peak and a residential peak. And that's part of what we consider when we think about making a waiver for hookup to the sewer. So, um, I, I think it's a, I think it fits what we're, what we look for in the criteria.
I think I agree with you.
Yep, that is one of the priorities that's put out in the policy, right? Providing more hookups.
And we may eventually work on that policy again to, uh, eliminate the need for having the room to design the septic onsite, because on Main Street, that's just not going to be practical.
Correct.
So, this one worked, but it's not going to be essential going forward. Okay, so, uh...
Public comment?
Public comment or questions on this project?
Where is it?
464 Main Street?
Yeah, but where is that?
Describe that a little better.
Was it Paul's Precision Auto, um, the one right next to the Chinese restaurant?
It's XL.
Yeah.
Will I move, we close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, by roll call, please?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
And I move approval?
I would move approval unless it's further discussion from the board.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
And next we have a discussion and date, location for Mayflower Wind, public forum? Uh, oh, excuse me, I'm skipping one, the...
Yep.
This is discuss and vote. Well, first we have to, I'm skipping two, right over. Request for variance to sign code, Chapter 184-30, special events, John Wesley, United Methodist Church, 270 Gifford Street, Falmouth. Everybody see the sign proposed and all the...
It's just kind of normal. This is part of our regular, uh, culture on Main Street. Or, in this case, uh, along...
I think this year, they're having a couple extra signs.
Well, they certainly do a lot of community service with the fundraising that they do, these various events.
Anybody have any concerns about it, or questions?
No, I'd move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And discuss and vote to, let's see, uh, now we're on to, uh, discuss and vote to approve Falmouth Housing Trust Local Initiative Program, LIP application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for premises at 33 Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, 15 minutes. Welcome, Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Attorney Laura Moynihan of Falmouth, I represent the Falmouth Housing Trust, and we have a presentation here, um, for you. So, this is an application under the Local Initiative, uh, Program, which is through the Department of Housing and Community Development, where, uh, a 40B housing developer asks the Board of Selectmen to approve endorsement of the application. So, that's what you're being asked to do, you're not being asked to issue a permit for this, um, home. That would be the zoning board, you're simply asking, or, um, we're asking you to endorse the application to the state, um, for, uh, review of the, uh, proposal for issuance of a project eligibility letter. So, the LIP application goes into the state, uh, you have a copy of it, the state reviews the application to determine if the project is eligible, um, for consideration, um, of a, of a 40B permit. That's the project eligibility letter. So, that's what we're asking you for here, um, is, uh, endorsement of the application under the Local Initiative Program, which is a, uh, local program for, uh, the town to take the initiative in terms of its affordable housing. So, um, this is for one affordable housing unit, the construction has been completed. It would, the home would be offered for sale to a household at or below 80% of the annual, um, median income for Barstow County, so it's essentially an affordable house. It's in an existing developed neighborhood of Pheasant Lane, and here's the GIS map to show you the location of the home, um, highlighted in yellow, it's in an already developed neighborhood. Um, the lot size is comparable to other lots in the neighborhood. There are 35 existing houses, and it is within walking distance of employment, recreation, schools, services. Pheasant Lane is off of Davisville Road. The site conditions, uh, again, the house is built, so there's existing landscape, driveway, utilities, um, the road's improved, it's outside the Water Resource Protection District, it's not in a flood zone, a hazard zone, no wetland resource areas. So, I'm off here on this, excuse me. So, we have a three-bedroom home with two stories, it was built in 2019, two bathrooms, uh, full baths, one half-bath garage, 1,964 gross square feet, and an exterior deck and yard areas. Uh, the lot coverage is below, uh, that permitted by the zoning bylaw. We have energy-efficient construction, um, and water conservation measures in the home. Traffic conditions, very minimal for one single-family dwelling, and, uh, less than the regional standard. Uh, these are some photographs of the home, and again, these are in your package. Uh, this is the front of the house, and the, uh, side elevations. It's not cooperating here. Excuse me. I'm just gonna use this. Uh, rear of the home, uh, side elevations, and this is the driveway, and you can see the surrounding neighborhood, uh, views of the street. This is the foundation plan, showing the house is set back 30 feet from the street, it meets all the various zoning setbacks, and this is the plan showing the location of the septic system. It's a, a three-bedroom Title V system, and a certificate of compliance has been issued by the Board of Health, and these are the printed elevations, all of this is in your package. Uh, the floor plan is showing the first floor with a master bedroom on the first floor and bath, kitchen, living area, outside deck, one-car garage, and the second floor, two bedrooms and an office area. So, the developer has to show that they have standing under the 40B regulations. Falmouth Housing Trust, as you know, is a nonprofit housing developer. They have site control with a purchase and sale agreement with the owner, um, and the LIP application to DHCD would give them project eligibility approval to apply to the zoning board for a comprehensive permit to legalize the home. Development costs, the purchase and sale agreement price is $400,000, soft costs, $36,790. The house would be sold for $265,000, um, to, again, a family in need of affordable housing. The housing trust had the home appraised fairly recently at $900,000. So, under the Town of Falmouth Affordable Housing, uh, Production Plan, which was approved in 2019, um, 370 affordable units to be constructed in five years, 56 of those are ownership units, uh, 28 three-or-more-bedroom units constructed in five years for sales. So, here we have the current status, uh, which is, um, fairly disappointing, to be frank. Uh, we have one unit built on Deer Pond Road, three units built for Locust Field Estates, and two condominium units for 41 Old Main Road. So, right now, since 2019, when the Housing Production Plan went into effect, we have six for-sale units. So, this unit would add to that subsidized housing inventory. The waivers that would be required from the zoning board would be the minimum average width of the lot, uh, the lot width is slightly short of the 100-foot minimum, and the lot area at 40,000 square feet. Now, the 40,000-square-foot lot area is one that's under the current zoning bylaw. When this plan for Pheasant Lane was approved in, in or around the 1970s, the lot size was not 40,000 square feet at that time. So, I've just identified, uh, the range of lots on that street, and you'll see that 17 of them are actually the same or similar size, and another 10 are around 15,000 square feet, and there's a couple of larger ones. But for the most part, um, this lot is, is comparable to what's in the neighborhood. Um, the house complies with the building setback requirements, building height, and number of stories. The development standards under the local comprehensive plan, I would submit, are, are important here for infill development, encourage and allow the market to create multiple housing opportunities, and, and accept responsibility for providing houses for people at all stages of life and levels of income. Here we are with the affordable housing data, so, according to DHCD, Falmouth is at 7.2% of the SHI for eligible units, 417 units short of the statutory minimum, and under the Housing Production Plan, we would have 50 for-sale units to be built in two and a half years to meet the HPP five-year objective. Um, the development standards for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for your board create the affordable housing with increased density that is compatible with the neighborhood. Project meets the criteria of the target population by providing low or moderate income housing, provides housing for larger families needing three bedrooms, creates home for first-time homebuyers, and provides workforce housing at 80% of AMI. So, overall, the project supports the implementation of local and regional housing plans, supports the Mass Housing Choice Goal. This is an innovative method of providing, uh, one affordable housing unit, and you have in your materials that the Affordable Housing Committee supports the application. Now, you may hear tonight about litigation that's ongoing with this home. Um, it is in court right now, where the owner is, um, uh, involved in litigation. Um, it has, uh, been stayed by the court. Um, the owner's attorney filed an application with the judge to stay the litigation, to allow for this process to take place. So, that was all set out in the court motion, that there would be a LIP application to your board, there would be a comprehensive permit application to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that it was in the best interests of affordable housing, and to avoid economic waste, to give eight months to allow this process to proceed, to see if the Housing Trust could get the approvals necessary, necessary to, um, have a comprehensive permit issued. As you know, the comprehensive permit can allow for waivers under the zoning bylaw, so whatever the issues are with the legality of the lot under the zoning bylaw, uh, waivers can be granted under 40B for, uh, the lot size and the minimum average width. And the result would be that there would be a beautiful home in a lovely neighborhood available at $265,000 to a deserving family, um, here in Falmouth. And, uh, so that's why we're here, we feel that it makes, um, a lot of sense for the home to be approved, um, rather than be torn down, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Ironically, if it was torn down, the Housing Trust could still come and apply to have a 40B home built on the site. Um, so, anybody could do that, or even more than one home. Um, you know, we, we look at, um, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Guidelines, looking for increased density...
Be audible out here.
Increased density where appropriate. Um, you know, the density here could be more than one unit, um, if that house was gone. So, that, that is the reality of the situation with this particular lot. We also looked at this house, you know, briefly, a two-story home, it has a master bedroom on the lower floor, two bedrooms on the upper floor. The Housing Trust felt that a one-unit application was most appropriate, given all the circumstances. But, uh, rest assured, under 40B, more than one unit could be developed on that property, uh, within the existing home, and also with additional buildings. So, we think this is a good result, um, for the community, um, for the Housing Trust, and for, um, a needy family, um, and also to have an, an additional unit added to the SHI, uh, for the town. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'd be seeking your vote tonight to endorse the LIP application for project eligibility. Again, you're not approving, uh, the comprehensive permit, you're not issuing a permit, you're just, um, agreeing to allow it to proceed to the state to determine if the state would issue project eligibility for the, for the home.
Right. This is very clear, and, uh, as you said, everything was in the packet. Other questions from the board about the application?
This will, if I could ask you, Laura, uh, this will have a permanent affordability restriction on it?
Correct. It would be deed restricted in perpetuity, uh, there would be a monitoring agent, there would be a lottery, um, for the homeowner, uh, who was awarded the, uh, the home, just like with any other for-sale project. The only difference here is it's already built. Um, and I should have mentioned, too, that the $400,000 purchase price, uh, right now, um, the Housing Trust is estimating that it would cost that or more to actually build a new home, and that doesn't even take into account the, uh, land acquisition value. So, this is actually a, a deal.
Great. And I did send an email to the Chair of the ZBA to alert him that we were going to be hearing this request, and, uh, Mr. Hurry replied that he appreciates the update, and the email's been circulated to ZBA members, and while I'm correct that the court has granted a stay in the case, it's also important to note that the ZBA has not settled the case to date. That's why there's a stay, so we can have a chance to discuss if, if the board is so
I thought it was a really thorough application. I think it makes sense, because there's already something there. We've talked about out-of-the-box ideas for, um, dealing with our affordable housing crisis, and I think this is a good example of one.
Okay. So, I know, uh, yes, Megan?
Sorry, and, and I apologize, I can't, uh, it's a little bit hard for me to hear, so I just, I'm sorry if I'm talking over someone. I, um, I'm going to set the legal issues aside, those aren't for us to decide tonight, as Attorney Moynihan has pointed out, um, and so just strictly on kind of the, the idea in and of itself, um, I cannot, I have said from the beginning, it's hard for me to, eh, think about tearing down a house, um, that has already been built. I know there are rules, we have regulations for a reason, but given how desperate we are for housing, that we were desperate before, post-pandemic, we are more desperate than ever for homes, there is nothing in a price range that is outlined in this particular project. There's very little in the price range... There's very little in the price range, twice the price of this project. And people who live in this town, regular, working folks who work really hard at very well-paying jobs, cannot afford to live in this community. And this would be a home that is, you know, one single opportunity, we need hundreds more of these, but one single opportunity for a family that we really need to stay in the Town of Falmouth. You know, these are the people that are the foundation of our community. So, you know, the courts are going to make their decision, but in terms of what's before this particular board tonight, I certainly would want us to use the authority we have to have this go forward to the, to the next level, for the application to go forward.
Okay, thank you. But, before we take this up, we're going to hear, I think there's a gentleman in the back who asked us if he could speak on this. Imagine your neighbor, sir, please come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Megan, did you just call back?
I did, sorry. I meant to mute myself, and I hung up on you.
Okay. Welcome.
Yeah, William Marster from Falmouth. Now, this, this is in court now, right? There's no settlement on it?
No, but the judge granted a stay to see if there could be any resolution here in the town, rather than by the court.
Okay, but, now, this has been in front of the zoning board a number of times.
Right.
And it's an unbuildable lot.
That's what the concern is.
It's still an unbuildable lot. Nothing changes there. So, if you do anything with it, you're still going to lower the property values of the houses next door. Yes, it does. You can shake your head all you want, you don't know what you're talking about. I know, because I had a LIP project going next to mine, and it went down the tubes, I couldn't sell it for giving it away. And, so, you're not friendly to the neighbors, you're not friendly to taxpayers. There's a, there's a, was anybody notified from Pheasant Lane tonight about this hearing?
I don't know that.
Was it mailing out to them?
No, I don't know that.
No?
I don't believe so.
Don't you think that would have been fair, to notify the people that this is coming on?
Well, they're going to be notified when it goes to, it's going to go back to ZBA.
And is ZBA here?
They were, I notified them last week that this was coming. If they wanted to be here, they could be.
But they will be involved.
Yeah, they are.
Because they're, they're the ones that will actually issue the comprehensive.
They've been involved.
Did you let me finish? You asked a question. The ZBA will get this matter, and will review it. And you will get, you'll get a notice from them.
How many times have they had this already? And it's been denied. This building was built knowing that it was a substandard lot. The whole building was built.
And, and every inspection was completed, and they got an occupancy permit?
Yes, yes, that, it doesn't make it right. Two wrongs don't make a right.
I'm not saying it makes it right.
Okay, so, so it's been, it's been declared, it's been deemed that it's supposed to be torn down, right? And now you're trying to, you're trying to avoid that. And, it's just not right. These projects, you know, come in, they ask for forgiveness, let's do something else so we don't have to do what we're supposed to do. This isn't, you know, and the neighbors, again, are the ones that get it stuck to them. Because you take their green space out, this development was designed to have green space in it. Now, you take the green space out of it, and put a house 10 feet off the lot line from them, and what do you have? You have a lower value, and a less happy neighbor.
I would say I'd be surprised if it was a green space, because how would the lot be sold then, if it was community-owned?
How was it sold as a buildable lot? Huh? How was, how was the building permit issued?
Right.
And, and after the building permit was issued, I understand that as the building commissioner left.
Excuse me, please, could you please hold your comments while we talk? I appreciate it.
You won't let him talk. You interrupt him while he timed out, and so do you.
I understand that the building commissioner, before he left, stated that it shouldn't have been built, that he was fed bad information on it, saying it was a buildable lot when it was substandard, which was proven right away, because they have it in the records upstairs. And they still allowed it to go on and be built, and be built, get an occupancy permit, it's been rented for months.
Right.
And now, you're saying, and then it leaves it open, will every substandard lot in town be able to be built on and built to 40B?
No, if they don't get a building permit, they won't.
But why would that be different? Why would that be different than this one?
I would hope they do a better job reviewing their permit applications.
Well, if you review the permit application, you'll find that it wasn't right, the house should never have been built, and it should be removed. It's been declared, it's been told that. In this, as far as the 40B, how, you talk about people in town. Well, there's a lot of people coming in from out of town, buying these houses, so it's not doing us any good. How many on the, on the lot that's next to me, the LIP next to me, I mean, that's still a mess. The safety issues, the, you know, I don't even know if they ever got the hydrants working on that, yet they issued the 12 permits. And, the people that moved in there aren't from town, they don't work in town, coming from out of state, this, that, and you talk about helping the people here. Well, it's not helping that many here, we're drawing a lot of people from all over the country. Is that helping the town? And you devaluing the properties around it. I had 100 people look at my house, because I wanted to get away from it, and they said, "No, I don't want to buy next to that thing." Two of our children said they don't want the house because of that. That was going to be a nice country lot, now it's, it looks like it's behind Walmart. Let's see.
Can I ask a question? So, if I just want to make sure I understand, what you're saying is you would like to see the house bulldozed?
Absolutely. Absolutely, move it somewhere, move it to a lot that is a buildable lot. That lot was never a buildable lot.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand, so a mistake was made, and a house was built there?
It was, it was allowed, because you people never stopped it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not arguing on that point. I agree. A mistake was made.
And he was, and the builder was told that he's building it under duress, or whatever. And it should have had a cease and desist, and he kept building.
I, I am not disagreeing with that point, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, we all agree that, that an error was made, grave error, in your opinion, that was made, okay. But there is now a house there, and we have an affordable housing crisis. And so, what you're saying is that, instead of using a perfectly good house, that perhaps does not, that perhaps, we should move the house, or demolish the house, rather than letting someone live in the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why can't you go by the rules? You make them as you go. When we wanted to get any support, you people wouldn't do anything for us. I'm trying to help the people on Pheasant Lane. I mean, Joe and I, we're just, you know, you ignored us completely. When I asked for help, when I asked why you were letting that be allowed, I got no answers. You wouldn't respond to me. When I tried to, I asked a letter to be read, it was ignored. It's supposed to be a public meeting, and you just do what, what you feel like doing. And, what you want to do now is break a law, right? You want to go against what has been proven, and because you let that go on, you think if you have somebody, is there a guarantee that anybody from Falmouth would even move into that house?
I don't think you can control that.
Well, then what good is it doing for the town?
Well, if the whole thing, may I just interject for a minute? Of course it would have to be, the person would then become a resident of Falmouth. So, let's just stop with the, with the xenophobia for just a moment. The person who would live in the home would become part of our community, and the person who would move here, we, the only people, the hordes of people who are moving here are lots of really wealthy people, not lots of people who are having troubles making, and me. Those people can't possibly find anywhere to live here. So, if we want to have any critique, and I'm certainly, I'm not saying anything negative one way or the other, but the folks who've made the housing market a challenge have not been folks who would be moving into this house, and who would qualify. It's individuals who have very significant resources, who are capable of buying very expensive properties. The individual and the family that would want to move into this home are individuals who cannot get into the housing market any other way. And with all due respect, and I, it, there is no property in the Town of Falmouth that is worth, well, strike that, let me say that. I would be shocked if there are more than, than a number of properties I can count on my two hands in the Town of Falmouth that are worth less today than they were two years ago, regardless of whether they are next to an affordable home or not.
That's.
Because the market is so incredibly inflated. So, homes are selling the first day they're on the market. In, in, in my profession, when my clients are getting divorced, and they're putting their homes on the market, they're going on to the market for one day, and they're getting cash offers 10, 20, 30, $40,000 over asking price. So, the idea that our properties are being diminished by a very lovely home, yes, I understand it's on a smaller lot, yes, I understand a, a, an error was made, a very significant error, and people should be disappointed, and they should be frustrated, as the gentleman who is speaking is rightfully pointing out. But now, we have an option. Do we rip this house down, or do we try to say, "We want regular folks, who are the people who are firefighters, our police officers, our teachers, people working in banks, people working at restaurants, plumbers, electricians, do we want those people to be able to live in our town?" And, I do, I want them to be able to live in our town. I don't want it to just be a place that folks retire to, and, and love all the folks who retire, because they bring a lot to our community, but I want a community that is diverse in the people that get to live here. And, that's the only way it's going to happen. And so, that, you know, I, I just, I, I think we need to be realistic, and I think we need to be practical, and to rip down a perfectly good home, when someone could make that a beautiful place to raise their family, I just, I think it is the wrong thing to do. Even though I understand what that gentleman is saying, and he's correct, it, this whole thing should not have happened.
So, so you think it's fine to ruin other people's properties, and have them lose their values, so somebody else can come in?
So, let me, if I could comment, before we go back and forth here with this. Obviously, the lot, the new zoning, is 40,000 square feet, but the house is built very similar to the other houses in the neighborhood. The first time, now, I followed this closely, because we, as a select board, were asked if we would want to join in this litigation months ago. So, we did understand the history of it. The builder, wrongfully clicked off buildable lot, not knowing any better, and it was a mistake, and it should have been caught, but it wasn't caught.
Oh, it was caught, it was caught, right away. I heard about it years ago.
It wasn't caught until after the foundation was already poured and backfilled. That's when, that's when the builder was notified. That's a little late to be getting a notice that there might be a problem. Don't you agree?
It was notified, the zoning board knew about it long before that.
Now, Mr. Van Kuren drove by and saw the foundation, and said, "That doesn't belong here."
It was before the foundation.
That's not what I was understanding when I.
No, it was before the foundation.
Okay.
And he went over and talked to the people.
Okay, yes, Mrs.?
Just want to clarify a few things. I don't represent the property owner, but this is in court. So, nothing's been proven or established. The Town of Falmouth is paying a special counsel out of the taxpayers' pocket to, for this litigation. So, everybody should be concerned about that, that the taxpayers are funding this litigation as well. And, there are appeals going on in terms of the decisions that the zoning board has made about tearing the house down. So, nothing has been finalized in court, nothing's been established to, to say that this has been proven, or that's been proven. What we're trying to do is to come up with a result here to allow for the house to be legalized under a different mechanism, which is state law. It doesn't mean, that would mean that the house would be legal under state law, as a 40B housing unit. We're not sticking it to the neighbors. Sticking it to the neighbors might mean coming in and building six units on that 10,000-square-foot lot. That's not what's happening. It's one house on a lot that's very similar in size to many lots in the neighborhood. The lot was not designated as green space, it was designated as a building lot on the old plan. So, if Mr. Marsters is concerned about the property values of the neighbors, then he must be concerned about the implication of this being an affordable home, not the fact that it's existing on Pheasant Lane. As far as market values go, you can look at the Lewis Neck Road application, the neighbor next to that property, where three units are now under construction, came to the zoning board, claimed up and down that their property values would be negatively impacted by that development. That property recently sold for something, I believe it was almost $200,000 more than what they bought it for. So, they made a significant profit selling their home next door to a lot that has three homes going on it. So, I get a little, you know, annoyed when people talk about how this will impact their property values, without any evidence of that. And, the 40B legislation is there for a reason, because everybody wants affordable housing, but nobody wants it in their backyard. And that's what we in the affordable housing community know, and we have to deal with it. Mr. Marsters is upset, because the property next to him had 12 units developed on it. This is a very different situation. It's one unit on a 10,000-square-foot lot in a neighborhood that has other 10,000-square-foot lots. Nobody's even going to know it's an affordable housing unit when they drive by it. I mean, that's the reality of it. And, what also does not make sense here is that if, as I said earlier, if this house was torn down, if that was the result of the court proceeding, the judge issued an order validating what the zoning board has said, the house would be vacant, the housing trust could put it under an agreement to buy the land, and come in and apply for a 40B housing permit, and build a new house, or build more than one house there, or build a four-unit condominium there. That's not what people want. So, it doesn't make any sense to drive that kind of argument here. As far as people buying the home, you know, it, it's, it's our firefighters, it's our police force, it's our teachers, it's the people who service the rest of us. We need them here, we need them living here. We don't want them living in Middleborough or Rochester, we want them living in Falmouth. Those are the people that we need in our community, and we need those people servicing the rest of us in the community, and we need to meet the obligation of providing housing for them. So, the claims about it being illegal, or this and that, none of that has been established. And as far as this board is concerned, the litigation is stayed, and the board should be reviewing this application in my submission, based on the merits of the application only, and not the litigation. Thank you.
I will make one final comment regarding the valuation. I know that the sale price of the house doesn't even control the value of the house itself. The assessor determines the value by the same standards that they use for any other property.
Prices have gone up on everything. So, if you can sell your house for $200,000 more, it means that, because you have to pay $200,000 more. So, that's like, manure, you know? And, so that, that's got nothing to do with prices coming up. That's one way. Maybe if you're moving out of state, it'd work for you, or going into elderly housing or something. But if you want to try to reinvest and get what you had where you were at, it's not going to work for you, when they put in a low-income housing. It drops the value. Would you buy a house, if you had an extra lot beside you, that gave you plenty of room so you're not looking into somebody's window, and had extra space, would you look at that first, before you'd look at a house that had somebody 10 feet off the lot line? Of course.
I'd buy a house that was already all developed. I'd buy a house that was already all developed around it, so I'd know what I was getting. But it doesn't matter, and we're getting way off the target.
Yes, but, it's, you know, it's been through the zoning board, it's been through the courts, it's been through hack, it's come back. And the last zoning board, they, it was agreed, it should be removed. Now, they can buy a lot up the street and move it up the street and let the people that had a nice neighborhood keep it. Or you can go in and ruin it, which is, you don't do much for neighbors around here. And when you talk about people supporting the firefighters and this and that, go look at, like, the street beside me. How many firefighters are on it? How many police are on it? I don't see any. A lot of out-of-towners, a lot of out-of-town states, you know, state plates come in. There's a couple of them that have rented, ones have been breakfast, B&amp;B, or whatever they call it.
All right, Ms. Marsters, and so, I guess, we're gonna hear from somebody else, okay? I think we've pretty much heard what you had to say.
Yeah, well, you get the idea.
Okay.
I'm just curious, you're gonna, uh-
Mark, could you identify yourself?
Oh, Mark Fineran. Ninety-eight grand, Ev. You're putting someone on a limited income, but you're moving them into essentially a million-dollar house. Aren't you hamstringing them with property taxes and certainly making them house poor? And I mean, they're not, I, it's, the whole thing seems inequitable to me in the first place. Anybody, you know, I'm, I'm all for affordable housing, but if it's not good enough for somebody off the street, why would it be, you know, not be illegal for someone else? I mean, it, it just sounds wrong. But also, I, again, I mean, they're gonna evaluate this at the value similar to the houses on the street. I mean, let's face it, next year it's gonna be worth a million bucks. These people are gonna be eating cereal. I mean, it's-
Well, we don't really know how that works. Would you like to give us some insight on that?
The home is deed restricted permanently. So, if the, the owner goes to sell it, the owner has to notify the monitoring agent, and the home is sold at a similar price to the next buyer. So, the valuation of the home is not at nine hundred thousand. The tax rate is based on a deed-restricted home that has a much lesser value, because it's deed-restricted in perpetuity. It's not going to be put on as a market home. So, the, a buyer has to be approved by the monitoring agent as an eligible buyer, meaning that their income, their credit, all of that is reviewed, they have to be employed. Eighty percent annual median income, the, the annual median income for Barstow County is something around eighty-five thousand dollars. You're talking about somebody who's making in the mid-sixty thousand as a salary. You know, that's, that's, and that's for, and then there's a scale for different household sizes, I don't have the exact data. But we're not talking about a thirty percent income or a fifty percent income, we're talking about somebody who's making a good income. We're talking about maybe a young person or a young couple. That's what those, they have to qualify for a mortgage, and they have to pay the mortgage. So, you know, all of these different arguments, we hear them all the time, why you shouldn't do this, why you shouldn't do this. And really, nobody's really saying why you should do it to meet the Housing Production Plan goals, which were established by the town and are very well-known. We're nowhere near meeting those Housing Production Plan goals. We, we have six units built. I mean, that's sad. That is sad, in, you know, almost three years. So, you know, something has to change in having an, almost an hour discussion over one unit on a ten thousand square foot lot. We're not gonna get very far, folks, with our Housing Production Plan if we have to spend an hour talking about sending this to the state for project eligibility.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just, just a second, Megan. I just want to say, that production plan is not just for that, that's not our goal. Our goal is to provide employees for the services that we need as homeowners in this town. And so, fine, you could say that's what the production plan is, but there's a reason for it, right?
Right.
We want to have people who can actually work and give, provide us with the services that we need as fellow citizens here in the town, and that's why it was set up that way.
And the other reason that number's so low is, as you know, it's, we've been asking people to do rentals and giving priorities to that, so.
Well, and the other reason is that, as Mr. Marsters sort of seemed to indicate, find a buildable lot and build a house on it. Well, look what the cost of buildable lots are. A buildable lot in this town is not a fifty thousand dollar lot. I mean, you'd be, you could be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for a buildable lot. So, to spend two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand for a buildable lot, and then spend another four hundred thousand or more to build one affordable unit, I mean, that's just not economically practical for, for anyone to do that. They would sell it as a market-rate home and make the nine hundred thousand. So, we have to be kind of realistic in what we're dealing with in the community, that, quite frankly, if we're building affordable housing, affordable housing is going to be built on unbuildable parcels, if you're looking at one unit. And if not, it's going to be multiple parcels at a lower density. That's how we have to develop affordable housing. So, any lot that's out there in the community that's quote "unbuildable" under zoning is eligible for one or more units of affordable housing, because that's pretty much all it can be used for, and, and it's affordable to acquire by a developer, profit or nonprofit. But that's the reality of it. As far as the Pheasant Lane owners, you know, this was put in the newspaper, it's not a public hearing, notice to the neighborhood is not legally required. It will go to the zoning board. The zoning board is the permit-granting authority, there'll be a full hearing there. Anybody that has concerns specifically about how this one home on their street impacts them and their livelihood, they'll have the opportunity to express that to the zoning board, and the zoning board has the discretion to approve or deny that permit. All we're asking you here is to start that process and allow it to get to the zoning board. The zoning board will be the one looking at all of the issues in minute detail, and I'm sure the neighbors who will get formal legal notice will come out and should come out if they have concerns and speak to the zoning board about it. But we're not here to, to do that. We're here to ask you to allow the state to review the site for project eligibility. That's it.
Right. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak about that, this whole pheasant run, pheasant lane, and whatever it is. I know the builder, so I know what happened. Nobody was notified, it was slid under the rug, you know, like, guys lift the rug, push the brim, just like the needle exchange was gonna go under the rug. You guys don't notify anybody. And she's our attorney, Maura O'Keefe, where's her resume? Who, where's her residential waiver?
Put it over.
This is way out of line.
I want to know who she is.
We're not here to prosecute other people.
Listen, Sam-
We're not here for that purpose.
Sam, give it up.
Do you want to speak to this agenda?
I did, and it was done the wrong way. And I want, I want her information, I want-
Resident? Nope.
Point of order.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Chair, could I offer a comment?
Please.
This is obviously, you know, it's a difficult, complicated issue because of the history. And I just wanted to suggest a perspective, it's not the only way to look at it, but it's a way to look at it, that whether you, as upset as one might be about the history and how we got to where we are with a house that was not supposed to be built because it was not a buildable lot, play it out for yourself in terms of what do you want to see happen? So, if, if you are living in this neighborhood and you don't want a single-family home on this parcel, let's say hypothetically, this board agrees with you and denies this LIP application, what do we think is gonna happen next? Well, there's, there's litigation, and we don't know how that's gonna play out. But let's, let's say that the litigation is found in favor of the town, and the owner, the property owner is forced to tear the house down. So, the neighbors might be very happy about that outcome, but remember, the town does not own this property. So, if you were the owner, and you had spent the money to build the house, and then you had to tear the house down, and you still own the property, and you still have the ability to apply for a 40B permit, not a LIP, not a friendly one, so you don't need select board approval at all, you go straight to ZBA, and the ZBA is gonna have a very difficult time denying, I would suggest, and I'm not an attorney, so it's, you can, this is worth what you pay for it, but it's, the, the two exemptions that are going to be required under a comprehensive permit to build three units of housing here are going to be a very easy standard for the property owner to meet. They're gonna be very likely to succeed, and, and maybe with more than one unit, maybe with three or four units. And even if the ZBA denies it, it goes to the State Housing Appeals Commission. So, you know, as much as everyone might want to try to find a solution that makes everyone happy, I, you know, I, I don't think that's an option here. So, regardless of what the history might be, again, you know, let's, let's think about where this goes if it does not get approved as a legalized house through a 40B process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm actually going, I think we've, I, I thank Mr. Johnson Sob for that, and, and I would, unless you object, I would like to put a motion to approve this to go forward for what, the portion that this board can control, you know, I think that we actually, I know the attorney, Moynihan, pointed out that we have an obligation to sort of meet that housing, you know, production standard. I actually think we have a moral obligation to make sure that people who are, are working, they're productive, they're trying to be members of our, our community, actually can have housing. And if anybody thinks that that's something that they can do in this day and age, they are woefully, you know, and maybe blissfully unaware of the challenges that the folks in our community face every day for basic, basic housing. And it is going to be a challenge for our community, for those of us who grew up here and, or who have lived here for a long time and have loved what this community has been, the character is going to change dramatically, because folks cannot, regular folks who work, want to raise families, want to age here in normal homes, on fixed income, cannot do that. I believe we really do have a moral obligation to face this housing crisis, and I think we have to do it in every way we can, and this, this provides an opportunity to chip away one tiny, tiny fraction. So, I, I would make a motion that we put this forward, get an approval, and obviously, you know, there'll be other steps that happen along the way.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Scott Price, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think we've heard all the arguments. I think it's an unfortunate situation, and we're trying to make the best of it, so. All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Discussion update on date and location for Mayflower-Wind Public Forum.
So, we have, we have good availability for a Mayflower-Wind Public Forum at the Lawrence School Auditorium. The board has a number of dates. We looked at Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings at the end of April and beginning of May, and also Saturday mornings. I have presented those potential dates to Mayflower-Wind representatives. They said they would get back to me, they haven't got back to me yet. I don't know if there's anyone here who has an answer on availability, no. So, I, with that, I guess I would suggest perhaps if the board has a preference for weeknight evenings versus Saturday mornings, or any particular conflicts with these dates, but if we could leave a couple of options so that we can make sure that the Mayflower representatives are available.
I like the Saturday morning idea. It gives a lot of folks a chance to show up, if that's-
That was my least favorite, but I do, that, I do agree, probably more likely for people to show up. I will say Wednesday, April 27th is also Citizen of the Year Award, so I would not be available that evening.
Okay.
But if, I do think if we think that most people would be able to attend on a Saturday, then I would encourage a Saturday.
So, that's either April 30th or May 7th. I have no, no problem with that.
Why don't we put out both of those dates to Mayflower and-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you comment about the date?
The two, the two that you just noted.
Saturday, May 7th, I don't know, is the day before Mother's Day, I don't know if that, that conflicts with people's schedules in general. I don't know. I don't know. So, I'm throwing it out there. I don't know.
Dave Bosnowski, president of Falmouth Heights Mary Vista Neighborhood Association. The EFSB has postponed their hearing at, at Mayflower's request.
Right.
Hasn't been rescheduled yet.
Correct.
So, in my mind, I think it's a little bit premature to actually schedule this open meeting with, with Mayflower before that hearing. I, well, let me put it this way, until the hearing has been reestablished, redated, I don't see, Mayflower has to go in with their revised application, which I suspect they're doing, I, I think that's what they, the way they worded it. And it's gonna be a very different meeting before they submit their revision. How can we even object to or question Mayflower if they haven't even revised it? So, my feeling is we, this public meeting that you're trying to schedule should be done after the new EFSB hearing date has been set. So, once it's set, and then we know what Mayflower's doing, you intend to intervene, others intend to intervene, you know?
The only reason I feel like we should get some kind of public meeting is because we've had a lot of comments and emails, you know, why all the secret meetings, and I'm sure it's troubling to, you know, residents, to executive session after executive session, but really, it's just strategizing and-
Exactly. I, I think a lot of people do understand that you are strategizing, you know, your position as well. And, and that's not something you necessarily want to make public before it, it comes to the presentation or the intervention.
Really just an, an attempt to try to show the public what we know, share whatever limited amount of information that we have, and I agree with you that it would be better if we actually had a site agreed to.
But if, our, our argument would be very different if their reapplication changes the location.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I was just going to offer another thought, obviously happy to do whatever the board wishes in terms of when to schedule the hearing, but want to make a couple points. One, we don't know for sure whether Mayflower is going to change their landfill locations or not.
Right.
They may, and that sort of leads to the second point, is part of the reason that the board may want to have a public forum before Mayflower restarts the process with the EFSB is to try to influence Mayflower's decision. You know, if, if Mayflower hears from community members that they, you know, that they're never gonna change their mind on one of the filed locations, or that there's a strong preference for another location that Mayflower did not file, perhaps that influences their decision.
Well, I think May, Mayflower's paying attention to the objections that are already being filed with the EFSB, and if they're, they've been paying attention to, you know, what's been going on in, in these meetings and in the newspaper and whatnot, there has been opposition. And I'm sure people across the state are not objecting to the wind aspect of it at all. They're in favor of, of the, the program. But it's, it's those of us in the direct community, they're, they're being affected by these cables onboarding in our community. Those are the, the major objections, I think. And in our case, both alternatives happen to fall within our neighborhood as well. So, needless to say, we're not happy as a, as a community.
And, so I was gonna comment, similar to what Peter was saying, I think that's why it's important to have them come in beforehand, because I'm, I can't, obviously, I don't know if they are watching these meetings, or if they're going back and looking at our minutes. You think, I, I would like to think so, but I'm not sure, but also, people don't always come to our meetings. But the second thing is, we do get a lot of emails from people who don't understand that what we're doing in executive session is strategy, and they really are asking us very pointed questions that either we, we can't answer because we're not Mayflower, or we, we don't know, and we want to let them know that we don't know those answers. So, I think for, if people don't want to come to the meeting because they feel that they've had, you know, they had their say at these meetings or elsewhere, I think that's fine, but to give an opportunity for people to ask the- elsewhere, I think that's fine. But to give an opportunity for people to ask those pointed questions, because some of them are just general questions that seem simple enough, but we, we can't answer them.
Right.
So I, I don't see any harm in it. If people don't show up, I think that's fine. But I think if anyone does show up and, and present their thoughts, it's just going to make Mayflower maybe move in our direction a little more.
So you've, your, your general feeling is that scheduling this public hearing with Mayflower and the town before the EFSB even has been rescheduled, before Mayflower has refiled, given it an opportunity to discuss things openly with Mayflower and the town and the public?
To discuss things openly. And it won't be the only one. I'm, I'm certain it wouldn't be the only one. It's just a preliminary one. And then, like you said, when we have more information, when they have refiled, and now that we've got some maybe background questions out of the way, where people have started to think about, okay, so we heard a little bit of this, and they might think of more questions that they want to ask the next time, then we would have another one. Correct?
Yeah. And also, you know, there's general questions that could be answered regardless of what site was agreed to, if, if any. And, you know, with health and safety and so forth, there's a lot of questions that people have that we'd like to see addressed. So I think whether or not they have a new date for the EFSB, I don't think really is going to, I shouldn't, I don't think it should guide us in having this public forum. I think people, I think a lot of people want answers.
All right.
They want to know what we've been talking about, really, you know?
All right. I, I see your point. Um, and my general feeling would be a Saturday morning would be perfect, because I think we'd get more people that are not year-round residents or not, uh, full-time residents that would be able to attend.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Relative to the subject of this meeting, which I think is a good question you're asking, Dave, is it possible we could get exponents to come and, and present their evaluation as background, so that people could at least be informed with what these third-party evaluations are?
Good idea.
We can, we can certainly take a look at that. I, you know, engine, large engineering firms like to work in certainties and studies and, you know, and written documentation. So I don't know that answering questions on the fly is necessarily their forte, but we can certainly, um, we can certainly discuss it with them and see if it's something that they think might be productive.
Well, I would think of it more as an educational presentation, not necessarily for them to change their perspective on them. But, you know, to take questions and be able to respond back and say, well, that's, you know, the industry, the health industry would not see it that way, or would see it this way. So that's...
Again, it would be more of just general health and safety questions, maybe not site-specific, but just, you know, how, can you touch it, or, you know?
Stay away from it. Yes, David?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Dave Moriarty, resident of Falmouth. Uh, I think Saturday morning is an excellent time to have this meeting. And I think that, uh, we should have several meetings, because, you know, until we know the route, the amount of megawatts, the amount of voltage is going through the project, until we see the plan of the real project, this is all hearsay, and it's really wasted a lot of our time and a lot of your time. It's just, it's just, uh, hasn't, hasn't brought the ball any further down the field. And, uh, and we don't want to waste any more time. We want results. We want good results. And in order to get good results, we need lots of meetings, lots of questions. We need a real plan that they're going to actually stick to. Uh, I just, and I, and, and the town, and the, and all of us, all of our residents, need to be reassured that you are going to hold these meetings, because I am starting to worry now. You're letting houses be built on unbuildable lots. This isn't the first time. This has happened quite a few times. And, and we're starting to worry that, that we're not being respected by the, uh, authorities and the, uh, elected officials. And it's really starting to, to bother a lot of folks. That's, so, several meetings, a real plan, the amount of voltage, the amount of megawatts that's coming into Falmouth, uh, enough with the shell games. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So then, uh, do we agree then, we'll offer the two Saturdays? Or is there, do you want to have any more alternate dates?
I think those are fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Megan, on that?
I'll come by tomorrow and grab a copy of her resume.
Michael O'Keefe, by any chance?
Oh, my God.
Copy of her resume?
Sorry about that.
I can try to something?
Were you speaking, Megan?
No. I was just saying that whatever it works for the board, works for me.
All right. Well, we're going to offer them the two Saturdays, and we'll see what we get.
What were those two dates again?
Uh, the last, April 30th and May 7th, I think?
Yep.
Yep. And that would be at the Lawrence School, rather than the high school, because the high school's not available yet.
Great.
In the morning, you said, probably?
Yeah, we're thinking, what, nine o'clock?
Nine AM?
Nine-ish.
Yep. And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is where I have to go, because now I'm like 45 minutes past bedtime, so my apologies. Not my bedtime.
Thank you for joining us.
Night, Megan.
Night, Megan.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any comments or questions or concerns about the consent agenda, either board or public? Is there any here for any items on the consent agenda?
None. I move approval for the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approval on the consent agenda?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. And Mr. Johnson stopped with supplemental report, if you would.
Of course. One moment.
Thank you. Uh, so the inter, internal working group for special events met last week and approved 17 special event permits, including the Falmouth Road Race. However, with respect to the Falmouth Road Race, they are seeking 12,800 runners this year, and that is greater than the number the public safety departments are comfortable with. So the approved permit was 10,000. Uh, we, there have been a couple of meetings, uh, with representatives of the town and the Falmouth Road Race, but I just wanted to give the board a heads-up that they may be appealing that decision to the select board for the recently adopted policy.
Okay.
But with that one exception, the new policy is working quite well.
Good. Thank you.
Uh, we're relieved to have completed a town meeting, thanks to the board and staff for the successful completion of that. Uh, one announcement with respect to schedule, Monday, the 18th, is Patriots Day, so town offices will be closed for the holiday. And your next regular business meeting is April 25th.
All right.
Point of order. I think we skipped over the minutes.
Okay.
Just come back to this. Just a question of order, that's all.
That concludes my report, so.
Oh, excuse me.
No problem.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
As long as we pick it up.
I will say that just the way the agenda, the consent agenda is written, is, does look like the minutes are in the consent agenda.
Yeah, yes.
When they probably should need to be.
They should be separate.
Yeah, that's a good excuse for missing.
Yeah. Here to help you out.
Thanks.
I actually, I actually agree. I think it is intended to be part of the consent agenda. Normally, it doesn't make it through.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
But I do have edits on the Monday, February 14th session.
Okay.
Mostly just grammatical, safer grant is lowercase and uppercase on the first page. Um, on page two, under public hearings, kind of in the middle of that big paragraph, the sentence that says, "This has been reviewed and approved by Harbor Master Concom Hearing with No Environmental Concerns." Just the way this, the sentence is written, doesn't quite make sense. Um, but I highlighted it. I can pass this down. Uh, there's also another sentence on the next page where the sentence itself doesn't quite make sense. Water safety for children who might go off dock dive water shallower than three feet. And then a little bit further down in public comment, it says, Mr. Salian, I think his name is spelled wrong there.
Soneen?
Yeah, it should be Soneen. I can keep going unless...
Yeah.
Okay.
What page are you on?
I'm now on page four.
Okay.
So on page four, under business number one, it says the D-E-S-E and E-E-C. It'd be good to put what those acronyms are.
Mm-hmm.
And, I think that was...
Page, page five, under C at the bottom, says it is critical the town take meaningful action next few years, because Massachusetts is expected to receive over 9 million. I think that should be billion, at the state level. So I would ask you to check that. But that's relatively minor. Um, on page seven, under the select board reports, uh, my comment was Cape and Islands, and now it's Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association.
Right.
We just need to start getting that name right. Otherwise, I would be happy to move that we approve the minutes as edited and release to public access.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass that down. Sorry, let me put my name on it.
And then, um, I found that the minute, the executive session minutes on March the 14th were actually in pretty good shape.
Agreed.
And so I would move approval and not release for public access.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And similarly, for the executive session one, for the executive, for the, um, Monday, March the 28th, uh, I found nothing wrong with that, and I would move to approve and relieve, and not release to, for public access, excuse me, not release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I keep going?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. I found the executive committee meetings of, meeting minutes of Monday, March 28th, 2022, also to be very clean and essentially correct. And so I would move approval of those minutes as printed and not release to public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I agree.
Those, those minutes were done very well.
On the last one I have is the executive session three, um, uh, that's for Monday, March the 28th. Um, in the long paragraph, um, there's, in trying to make some meaning of this, uh, there's a, the fourth line down, it starts after the semicolon, 60% will stay with the state, and I would say portion administered by a board of directors. Am I giving away any sensitive information there? So if there are no other edits, then I would move that we approve these minutes of executive session three for Monday, March 28th, 2022, uh, as edited and released for public access.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any reports from board members today? Start?
No, you go. We were on the same meeting, so I know you have your notes.
Um, the only one that I'm going to report on, um, is the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting on April the 8th. Um, we did have some reports from county and, uh, officials that I thought were, were interesting. One of them was Marina Brock, who is the Boston, uh, Barnstable County Department of Public Health and Environment. And there are some, can you get the language up here? Um, some grant opportunities that I'm hoping staff are, are staying on top of, because, uh, there's a fair amount of money that the state is offering. Uh, and I know that actually EDIC has used these vehicles, um, as, as a way of gaining money for, uh, some of the projects that they're doing for the town. Um, but they're, okay, I'll, I'll find it in a second in my notes here. Um, these are the one-stop grants that the state is putting them out. And it's fairly easy to get a list of them if you just go to www.mass.gov/onestop, and there's a whole list of them. Uh, and these are grants that, um, can be used for, for preliminary, you know, studies, uh, or they can even, after getting further along the stra, stra, past pre-development, uh, they can actually be used toward full application for shovel-ready projects. So it just seemed like that was a source of, of, of grant money for infrastructure projects that the town is wanting to proceed, including, according, including, of course, the expansion of our sewage collection system. So, uh, that was presented at that meeting, and, uh, I think that was the, the significant thing. There were certainly lots of discussions on many other topics, but it's, it's an excellent forum to find out what's going on at a more regional and state level. So...
And I'd like to report that, uh, Daniel Gessen sent us a nice email after his assembly meeting and gave us the detailed breakdown of the meeting, and he's off to a good start. So that was good.
You're here.
I agree with that.
Okay. Anything else from board, or?
I move we adjourn. Oh, this, I'm sorry.
Future agenda?
Discussion of future agenda items. Um, I'd like to set a date for the meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay.
So either if we have a, a light meeting coming up to add in maybe 30 minutes for that discussion, or setting a separate meeting for that.
I would say the 25th is shaken up to be a pretty big meeting, so maybe the one after that, if that would be, I mean, we'll consider the 25th, but, but so many things that you've already talked about.
Oh, I don't want to make it any longer. I can go, it can go to the next one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably should have done it tonight, actually, but we're shorthanded, so.
So that would be the annual, um, is the thought that that would be the annual report of the Affordable Housing Committee and incorporate a dialogue?
You could do that as well.
No, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Can I have one more item, uh, as a result of that, Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association that was discussed that morning? And that has to do with, uh, staff safety. Um, and I don't, Peter, I don't know whether you're aware of this, but MIA, our insurer, is actually paying for municipal department heads training. And this is all basically to try to, you know, teach safe practices and mitigate, you know, accidents that, for which the town might be liable. Uh, but that was mentioned, and I just thought I would pass it on to you. I don't know whether it's come across your, your desk.
Yeah, every, uh, every month, we have a list of free training offered by MIA that's related.
Great. Thank you.
Are we getting caught up on the training?
Um, y- yeah, we, so it, I mean, it depends on the kind of training. Yes, we, you know, we take advantage of it from time to time. We don't, you know, I can't say we participate in every training that they offer. Um, but I know that DPW in particular has recently made a push to, um, do a lot of training around the OSHA regulations that were promulgated a year or so ago.
Mm-hmm.
That's applicable to municipalities where it had not been before.
Right.
Excellent.
Okay.
We have a comment from the...
Oh, did you want to come up?
Uh, thank you, Art Gaylord. Um, I just wanted to ask, since the, when you did the consent agenda, it kind of slipped past some things that I was wondering about.
Oh, sorry.
Mainly, um, if we could get a copy of, uh, the petition that is being sent to the state legislature concerning the article. Um, and the other thing is, I, I would just like to take a, a second to, uh, thank the, the board, the town administration for all the support and help that you've given us in, during this process of, uh, getting the, the MLP, um, established. It's, it's been very helpful. And I know that not everybody always agreed, but everybody was always courteous and everybody was, was helpful when they could be. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Yes, certainly.
Use LIP license here in complications.
Oh, sorry, that was already, that was on the consent agenda as well.
All right.
Sorry, we should have announced that for you.
Perfect.
So, we changed the policy, uh, several months ago to where we have what's called a consent agenda. And then anything that's on there, it's almost like the blanket vote at town meeting. If we don't hold it to discuss it, we don't have any concerns with it, it just passes without any discussion.
Fine with that one.
Okay? Did you have a concern with any of those ideas?
My point.
Okay, great point. Thank you. All right. Well, sorry for letting you sit there.
Okay.
I'm sure. So I move we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.